The City of Andalia Council Meeting for June the 18th, 2018 is now called to order. We will begin with a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Councilman Ayers, I understand you have a motion here?
Yes, I'd like to move to council that we amend the agenda to add council consideration of the side yard variance for the property of 6750 Old Webster Street.
Okay, and that would become item 14B. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Ayers and seconded by Councilman Lewis that we do amend our agenda to include item 14B to review the request of a variance for a side yard setback at 6750 Old Webster. Are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Council, you have the council study session minutes of May the 21st, the council meeting minutes of May the 21st. Are there any corrections or additions to be made to those? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. We have no communication petitions or wards this evening, nor do we have any public hearings, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. If there's someone in our audience who would like to make comment to us, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment. Seeing none, we will...
Oh, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You didn't move like that.
You're usually in the first row.
Well, I figured out I could get out of the camera view if I sit back there with...
Wow, that's the way it works.
Secrets that you learn when you're here. Holly Wigan, 660 Castle Creek Drive. I am coming up representing DP and L. Wanted to make sure that you are aware and that you can make citizens aware that we are giving out some energy efficiency kits. If you go onto our website, dpandl.com, and just put in the search "energy efficiency kit," you will receive a packet in the mail with some light bulbs and some water aerators and things of that nature that will help you save money on your electric bill.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We should all take advantage of that.
Yes, you should.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now I can say, seeing none, we'll continue on with the agenda. And that brings us to our city manager's report. Information items, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got two items this evening. First is the City of Andalia and Butler Township present the Star Spangled Celebration on Tuesday, July 3rd, beginning at 7:00 PM. This year's event is being sponsored by Fifth Third Bank, Bo Towns and Ford, Lincoln and Nissan, Joseph Airport Toyota, Scion and Hyundai, as well as Smedley Chevrolet, with additional support from Digital Cowboy Computers. Entertainment will be provided by the Tyler Cochrane Trio. Fireworks start at 10:00 PM. However, in the case of rain, the fireworks will be held on Friday, July 6th, with fireworks only, no entertainment. And also a reminder, the city offices will be closed on Wednesday, July 4th, in observance of the Independence Day holiday. However, the rec center will be open from 7:00 to noon on that day, including the fitness area, track and gymnasium only.
Thank you. I do have a question about if indeed the fireworks are rained out and we have to reschedule them for the Friday. How will people actually know? Because I know last year, some people did not go because they thought that they weren't going to be happening because of the weather.
We'll notify them mainly through social media.
Social media?
Yeah, we'll get information out to the news outlets as well, though.
And that would be sufficient time for people to make arrangements?
Well, yeah, if it's rained out Wednesday evening, Thursday morning, we would get information, start getting information out.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Action items, boards and commissioners, term expiring, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So council has asked to consider the reappointment of current board and commission members whose terms will expire June 30th. Council has provided a memo from Mrs. Przynski detailing those members who wish to be reappointed.
Thank you. Having looked at the list and everything, do I have a motion to reappoint those that have interest in continuing?
Your Honor, I move that we reappoint the board and commissions, people that have re-upped for their terms expiring.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, seconded by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do appoint Mrs. Amber Weaver to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Comments?
I'd just like to compliment Amber on her initiative and wanting to serve the city and by her efforts to learn about the city government through her consistent attendance of our meetings and workshops.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC for telecommunications services. Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Cincinnati Bell is the city service provider for telephone data and long-distance services. Our current three-year contract expires at the end of October. However, the city can realize additional savings by renewing its contract early. The three-year contract will reduce our monthly cost by $75 or $2,100 annually. The new three-year contract will cost approximately $17,995 annually and $53,987 over the term of the contract, depending on our usage.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 18-r-42.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers, seconded by Councilman Lewis, that we do approve resolution 18-r-42 as presented. Are there comments?
I have one. I do appreciate Mr. Davy being sensitive to the cost savings and looking out for us as far as having those cost savings. Certainly by renewing this early helped with that. So I appreciate that. Staff members being cognizant of that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Council Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no old business this evening, and that brings us to our first resolution, and that is 18-r-41. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2018 new E50 T4 Bobcat compact excavator requested by the Public Works Department from Clark Equipment Company, DBA Bobcat Company, in the amount of the state bid price of $61,231.88 and declaring the current 1995 Ford Baco to be surplus property.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. $60,000 is budgeted for the replacement of a 1995 Ford Baco. Several models were demonstrated over the past several months, with the Bobcat compact excavator being recommended. This model with three different sized buckets is available through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Plan. However, the cost does exceed the budget by $1,231.88. However, the street sweeper and the trackless leaf machine were under budget by a combined $16,473. Additionally, by purchasing a Bobcat model, the Public Works Department already has several attachments that will be compatible.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve resolution 18-r-41 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Farce, seconded by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve resolution 18-r-41 as presented. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution 18-r-42, Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC for telecommunications services.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Cincinnati Bell is the city service provider for telephone data and long-distance services. Our current three-year contract expires at the end of October. However, the city can realize additional savings by renewing its contract early. The three-year contract will reduce our monthly cost by $75 or $2,100 annually. The new three-year contract will cost approximately $17,995 annually and $53,987 over the term of the contract, depending on our usage.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve resolution 18-r-42.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Farce, seconded by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve resolution 18-r-41 as presented. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution 18-r-42, Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC for telecommunications services.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Cincinnati Bell is the city service provider for telephone data and long-distance services. Our current three-year contract expires at the end of October. However, the city can realize additional savings by renewing its contract early. The three-year contract will reduce our monthly cost by $75 or $2,100 annually. The new three-year contract will cost approximately $17,995 annually and $53,987 over the term of the contract, depending on our usage.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 18-r-42.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers, seconded by Councilman Lewis, that we do approve resolution 18-r-42 as presented. Are there comments?
I have one. I do appreciate Mr. Davy being sensitive to the cost savings and looking out for us as far as having those cost savings. Certainly by renewing this early helped with that. So I appreciate that. Staff members being cognizant of that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution 18-r-43, Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an economic development government equity agreement with Montgomery County Office of Economic Development regarding the Sand Lake Property LLC project and to enter into an edge agreement with the edge grant recipient.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Sand Lake LLC, an affiliate of Dayton Freight Lines, owns the 14-tenant office building at 6450 Poe Avenue. A $75,000 edge grant was requested for a $540,000 project to upgrade the building's climate control system. The edge request was approved at $58,000. This building contains Dayton Freight Lines corporate headquarters that propose to add an additional 41 full-time employees with an estimated payroll of $13.85 million.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 18-r-43 as read.
Second. Ooh, there was a tie there.
There was a motion by Councilman Blakeslee, seconded by Councilman Gerhardt, that we
do approve resolution 18-r-43. Comments about this one? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution 18-r-42, Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC for telecommunications services.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. A resolution 18-r-42 is budgeted for the replacement of a 1995 Ford Baco. Several models were demonstrated over the past several months, with the Bobcat compact excavator being recommended. This model with three different sized buckets is available through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Plan. However, the cost does exceed the budget by $1,231.88. However, the street sweeper and the trackless leaf machine were under budget by a combined $16,473. Additionally, by purchasing a Bobcat model, the Public Works Department already has several attachments that will be compatible.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve resolution 18-r-42.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Farce, seconded by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve resolution 18-r-41 as presented. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution 18-r-42, Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC for telecommunications services.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. A resolution 18-r-42 is budgeted for the replacement of a 1996 Bond Anticipation Notes related to the 1996 bonds that were issued for the rec center, justice center, and municipal building projects that are due to mature on September 5th. The total amount due is $3,259,000 in principal plus $64,999 in interest. The 2018 budget did appropriate $817,000 towards the principal plus the interest. Therefore, the remaining principal balance on the notes will be $2,442,000. Again, the reissuance of these notes will be combined with the reissuance of the fire truck notes to save issuance costs. This ordinance will be voted on as an emergency at your July 16th meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion we approve ordinance 18-r-13.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, seconded by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve ordinance 18-r-13 as presented. Are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Ordnance 18-r-14, Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $384,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring a fire apparatus, together with all related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Bond Anticipation Notes related to the 2016 purchase of a new rescue fire engine are set to expire September 5th. The principal amount due is $432,000. The 2018 budget includes $48,000 toward principal, $8,616 in interest. The remaining principal balance on these notes will be $384,000. So this ordinance will be voted on as an emergency at your July 16th meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 18-r-14 as presented. Are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Ordnance 18-r-15, Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance enacting a new chapter 1032 titled Small Cell Facilities in the Codified Ordinances of the City of Andalia.
Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So recently enacted House Bill 478 created statewide regulations governing the deployment of small cell wireless infrastructure within municipalities right-of-way. The purpose of the legislation is to allow the orderly deployment and implementation of new technologies to promote economic development while protecting and preserving the local character of neighborhoods and historic districts. So this ordinance establishes general procedures and standards for the siting, construction, placement, co-location, modification, operation, and removal of small cell wireless infrastructure. So what...I'm not going to read all this. So basically what this ordinance does, so it will define what a small cell facility is. It will require a permit for the co-location, construction, and removal of any small cell facility within our right-of-way. It will define and explain the review and approval process. It will set forth nine preferred location standards, and it will strongly encourage co-location by the different companies. It will set forth specific design guidelines that must be met, and it'll set a one-time fee of $250 for the review of an application, and a $200 annual fee per small cell facility that's co-located or located on property owned by the city.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make motion that we approve ordinance 18-r-15.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, seconded by Councilman Ayers, that we do approve ordinance 18-r-15. Are there any comments?
I just have a question. The legislation here, did it all completely emanate from the state, or did the cities have some type of an input, that group that protested the actual existing, the enabling legislation, I should say?
Yeah, yeah. There was model legislation, or model legislation, I guess, that came out through the High Municipal League.
Okay.
And then there was a group of Dayton municipalities that got together and kind of refined it.
And kind of refined it, and this is how we ended up. Okay.
I don't know if this applies or not, but I can remember when the cell towers were going up and everything. People were either leasing some parts of their property or selling parts of their property. Is that a possibility with this type of cell?
Correct, it is. We already have legislation in place that takes care of wireless facilities on private property.
Okay.
This ordinance deals specifically with wireless facilities within the city's right-of-way.
Okay. Good, thank you. Anybody else? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. We have no ordinances in their second reading. However, we do have an emergency ordinance, and that's ordinance 18-r-11. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Andalia, Montgomery County, Ohio during calendar year ending December 31, 2018, and amending ordinance 1730 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance would amend 2018 appropriations by adding an additional $15,000 to the capital improvement fund. The purpose is for the purchase and installation of a new large hoist at the public works garage. The hoist is used to lift vehicles for repair and maintenance, and it's...our current hoist has been in service for over 30 years and was used at the time we originally purchased it, and it recently failed and too costly to repair.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance as an emergency, I will open up a public hearing. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the emergency ordinance 18-r-11.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Lewis, seconded by Councilman Blakeslee, that we table the variance request at 1201 Bailey Avenue. And that was at our next meeting, and this will be brought up? Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, fine. Any comments about that? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. At the beginning of our meeting, we had an amendment to our regular council agenda here, and that would be item 14B, a variance for the side yard setback at 57...excuse me, 6750 Old Webster. Is there...
Your Honor, I'd like to move that we approve the side yard variance for the proposed barn at 6750 Old Webster for a 13 feet 2 inch minimum setback on the east and a minimum setback of 19 feet 3 inches on the west.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Lewis and seconded by Councilman Ayers, that we do review and request approval
Approve the...
Of the variance that was requested this evening. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. You have the Board of Zoning Appeals minutes of May the 9th. You have Planning Commission minutes of May the 8th, Planning Commission minutes of May the 22nd, Andalia Cultural Arts Committee draft minutes of May the 15th. Are there any comments about any of those? We have a bill listing for May in the amount of $3,260...excuse me, I can't even say it. I'm sort of with you, Mr. Cruzey. Again, my number's all mixed up. $3,2,622.98. I got it out. Does somebody want to adjust that for me or whatever? Did I say it right? I'm sorry. Okay, we can begin now with council comments, and that's with Mr. McDonald. Anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Cruzey?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
How about Councilman Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Gerhardt?
I always like to encourage everyone to come out to the Star Spangled Celebration. It's one of my favorite Andalia activities of the year. It's always a good time. That would be all.
Thank you. Councilman Blakeslee?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Farce?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilman Lewis?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Vice Mayor Herbs?
Just keeping my fingers crossed for a sunny airshow parade and airshow weekend and a good turnout.
Great, is that it?
That's it.
And I think I brought this up at the last council meeting, and that would be the sessions that the police department is having. And Thursday, July the 12th, is another very important session, and this session is invaluable to parents and teenagers, and it's called Hidden in Plain Sight. And what it does is it gives parents the tools they need to spot